Good evening. Thank you for joining the Hyde Park Planning Board at our November 18th meeting. I'll first note that this meeting is being conducted under the authority of Governor Andrew Cuomo, whose initial executive order 202.1 has last been extended to 202.72. This authorizes public meetings to be conducted virtually with certain protocols that we all follow. Let me first confirm before we start the meeting that each member of the board is alone. And Wiser?
I'm alone.
Ms. Wasser?
I'm alone.
Mr. Pickett?
I am alone.
Mr. Oliver?
I am alone.
Ms. Denapoli?
I'm alone.
And Vice Chair Dexter?
I am alone.
Thank you. Please join me as we salute the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The first item on the agenda this evening is a new public hearing for Belvedere Inn. May I get a motion to open the public here?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Brent Pickett will second the motion.
Thank you, everyone in favor. Please raise your hands. Say aye. Nays or abstentions? The motion carries. As a reminder, this has been under discussion for quite some time. The applicants are now seeking approval, we'll call it, to install or to approve lights that have already been installed that are uplights. There's a potential issue of a runoff from the bamboo barrier that's going to be used to screen between some residences behind the site and this one, and some other notes that Ms. Axelson made a point of saying. Mr. Smith is here tonight. I'll turn it over to you representing the applicant. Hi, Warren.
Hi. Thank you for entertaining this and for scheduling a public hearing. Neil, are you going to share the drawings we provided?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So as the chair said, this is actually a fairly modest application for this site. We received our approval to open and operate, I believe, at the end of last year, or maybe the beginning of this year. I sort of lost track. And then, of course, the pandemic came along and caused things to kind of grind to a halt. And since that time, the applicants have been considering, the owners have been considering some modest changes to the site for a variety of reasons. But at this point, this application is really for two relatively minor things on the site, one of which has been already done and one of which is requested. There has been some site lighting installed, ambient site lighting, not to illuminate driveways and walkways so much as simply to highlight some of the characteristics of the site, the plantings and the rock formations and the hill behind the rear buildings and so forth, just to, I guess, again, increase the ambiance or mood after dark, which could be in the winter earlier or in the summer, not designed to create skyglow or to intrude on anybody, any neighbor's property, but simply, again, to illuminate the site. So when you look out at night, it's not all dark, if you look to the east specifically. And the planning board had an opportunity, a couple of days, I think, to see that lighting installed on the site. And the comments were generally the fact that as long as you don't put any more lights there, we think this probably is okay. But obviously, we need a formal approval for that. The second aspect of this application is a proposal to put a bamboo screen along the south property line, right behind the building referred to as the carriage house, which on the sheet, on the display at the moment, is the second building down from the top, the top one being the mansion itself. At the backside of the carriage house, proposed to put a bamboo screen along the property line that would shield lights both from Belvedere to the adjacent properties and vice versa. In order to make that more effective, there's a proposal to run a fencing material between two rows of bamboo, so that even if the bamboo isn't as dense initially as it should get eventually, it would stop the light trespass. And there's a detail of that, I think, shown on sheet number three. This is a non, specifically a non-invasive species of bamboo, but to ensure it doesn't change its habit and decide to become invasive, there are details incorporated to go down below the roots on both sides to keep it from potentially spreading on the neighbors, because as we know, bamboo can take over and sort of march across properties. But this is specifically a species selected not to do that, and have been additional measures as they propose to belt and suspenders, make sure that doesn't happen. But that really is the substance of the application. It's to approve some site lighting installed for ambiance on the property and to approve a screen, a screen of bamboo on the south property line.
Thank you, Warren. That was pretty comprehensive. Before I go on to our consultants first and ultimately get to public comment, I just wanted to point out that I believe both Stephanie and I went out at different times to take a look at the lighting that's there now. Warren had thoughtfully provided us a sheet of what a metrics for the lights as they're installed. And there was one sort of particularly strong 12.3, I think it is, foot candle that's over north of the main building. When I arrived there, there was, there is a, I guess I'll call it a really large chandelier, outdoor chandelier of lighting. It's enclosed within a grove of evergreens. And the lights, they're sort of what, I believe they call them Edison lights, because they look very old fashioned. It looks pretty glamorous to me, and I could tell immediately, that's not where the 12.3 is coming from. I'm pretty sure it's coming from an older light fixture that's along the driveway that has a really light, a strong bulb in it right now. That's what I'm guessing. But overall, and I'll let Stephanie speak as well, when I got there, they didn't seem obtrusive to me. And again, I couldn't quite find the 12.3 precisely. But I'll also note that on the foot candle page that he's provided, it goes down to 0.2 fairly quickly. And the overall, the overall average for the site is well below one foot candle, which is comporting with Greenway guidelines. So in other words, I think I'm sort of affirming that what Warren is saying, that it's more for ambience. I would agree as well on that. Ms. Axelson, I think you had a couple of quick comments, minor ones, but.
Yeah, I originally had a slew of comments, but then the project has scaled back measurably. And I know that on a couple of the plan sheets, there's a little note that says 27 parking spaces. And I didn't know if that was left over from the previous proposal, or if that's something from the existing conditions plan. It just wasn't really clear. And if you go back to sheet, I think it's SP1, sort of in the center area, it just says 27 parking spaces. And I'm not sure why. It's where the main driveway comes in, right in front of the sort of mansion.
Right. So I think my, I'm not looking at during the moment, but my recollection is that is a sort of a legacy number for parking spaces from the site plan that was initially approved for the site a decade or more ago. And that because no changes are being, were proposed to the driveways or parking in the approval we got at the end of last year, and no changes are proposed now, that that's kind of a holdover number. We haven't limited any spaces, but that's where that's coming from. It's not suggesting any change in parking or drive by or anything else.
Okay, that was my only question. Everything else looks fine, and I didn't do a formal review on this one.
Thank you. Mr. Sotera, I believe you and Tad had some concerns about the underground enclosure that would more or less box or fence in the bamboo roots?
Yeah, in our agenda call, we had talked about whether the bamboo plantings right adjacent to the property line would have any kind of an impact in terms of holding back some existing sheet flow from the adjoining property, because again, I'm not an expert on plants, but Ted, Ted and the chairman had talked about that the bamboo roots can form, also form on top, on top of the ground a little bit, I believe. Ted, maybe you want to jump in on that a little bit?
The successful containment for the roots of the bamboo is typically elevated three or four inches above the ground, as well as like 18 inches to two feet below the ground. So the above-ground portion, the sheet flow would come down and hit that above-ground barrier and flow across the contours and possibly become concentrated. And I was somewhat concerned about the full length of that barrier, causing some erosion problems on the gravel driveway or next to the gravel driveway. So we had talked about possibly breaking that every so many feet to allow that water to go through, so that it would be kind of like bubbles with a break in between. So you've got your bamboo ovals with a break in between, and it doesn't have to be very wide, because you're not going to concentrate a lot as it moves. But that might be a way to keep a continuous top screen, but yet allow water through and have the root barrier.
So that's a really good point that Peter and Ted had made. That's one reason why the, or is the reason why the barrier proposed to go between the two rows of bamboo is held up off the ground a little bit, specifically to allow water to go through. But your point is that even with that, the actual root barrier could, would, to be effective, would need to be above grade. And so therefore, we would need to actually, as I say, as you said, have a gap in that periodically to allow water to go through. We can certainly accommodate that, because our engineers were very sensitive to that whole thought of water collecting, really coming off the neighbor's property, which is a little higher at this point, and allowing it to continue to flow as it would without any impediment.
And if the break is small enough, I'm certain that the tops of the bamboo will still lace together, so that it will still be a continuous visual screen.
Right. That's a good point. Thank you.
And Warren, really, it's because of the length that's proposed for the bamboo screen. It's pretty long. It looked like, I didn't scale it out, but maybe 120, 130, 140 feet.
It's fairly long. There are the two driveways that go through, of course.
Right, right. It's just, we, Tad started looking at and thinking about, what if water concentrated became a point source for pollution later on?
Yeah, we want to avoid that, too. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Sotera or Ms. Moss?
No. Liz has something, I think, though.
Sure.
I was raising my hand. Not sure the etiquette here.
I can't, I can't see when there's this many people. I can't see.
Okay, sorry. So what I was looking for is, where in the plan set, I see that the lighting is shown on the fourth sheet, the fourth plan sheet, B E L dash L L dash field.
Yes.
And what I was looking for was a table that tells me how many of the items there are. And then I'm looking at a separate sheet, which is called Belvedere Illumination Photometrics.
Right.
And there's a table there, but it doesn't give the quantity of each type of lighting unit. So.
Right. That was a separate document submitted. I want to say it's 11 by 17. There are a couple of sheets in the submission package, which, yeah, which probably wouldn't read so well on the screen here. But those were among the things submitted. If you haven't seen that or can't find it, I'm happy to send it again. But there is specifically a tabulation of the quantity of fixtures keying.
It's missing the quantity of fixtures. That's what I can't find.
Oh, the quantity is not shown? Okay.
Yeah. So that would be my suggestion. There'd be some kind of table, preferably on, on the lighting sheet, B L dash L L dash field. That's kind of like the table on that separate eight and a half by 11, but actually says the quantity of each type of lighting, just so that.
I'm sorry. I did think that existed, and it might be that if I put it on the sheet, it would be too small to be legible. But let me just confirm that. And if it's missing, I will provide that for you.
Great.
I'll just intercede here for a moment to say that that's also county planning called me about this project two days ago. And that was their concern, too, is having to count up the numbers. She didn't find the titles either.
I didn't want to count them.
Thank you.
So I think on the 11 by 17 set dated October 7.
Right.
On the third, second sheet, there's a middle that starts listing the fixtures, and there's a middle column. It's very skinny, and it says lamp quantity.
Wait, is, there's a second sheet?
That was an old supplemental. That's an old supplemental.
That's old. Never mind. My bad, because it doesn't have all of them on there. Okay.
So anyway, I think it's possible to put together a table, and I would suggest put it on the plan set, so that the planning board has one plan set for their files with everything on it.
You can certainly do that.
I'm going to start with, start with board members. And tonight, I'm not going to do my usual, how I call upon you, because I think of you still being on the dais, but to start with Ms. Wasser, Stephanie.
Well, I just want to reiterate your comments earlier about the lighting when I didn't go up there. And I thought that circular extra chandelier was festive. I really liked it. And I thought the lighting was fine as I saw it that night. Didn't have the rear lighting on the trees, but I was fine with it. And I don't have any issues, other than raised already.
Mr. Pickett? Comments?
Was that for me?
Yes, sorry, Brent?
Oh, yes. No, glad to see you move forward. No issues, no comments.
Ms. Wiser?
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Mr. Oliver?
Just to thank you for taking the time to really do a nice job with the root barrier and containment plan that you're doing. I know that was a big concern of most of the people on the board last, last meeting. So thank you, and hopefully moving in the right direction.
Thank you, Chris. Ms. Denapoli?
We look forward to seeing it reopen again. It's been closed way too long. And thank you. No other comments.
Vice Chair Dexter?
I echo my colleague's comments. And I did just want to say, good pickup on the lighting. And it will be good to have kind of an inventory listing for us to reflect back on in case they start to grow. But I am, I'm looking forward to seeing the place open.
And I do want to reiterate that we did check, this is a non-invasive species of bamboo. As Warren said, bamboo is kind, can be a bully and a thug and just walk all over every place. This is one that, it can still do that, but when you contain it, it should be fine. If everyone knows where Pete Andros lives, down at Dock Street, as you go by the curve, where River Road curves, he's had a contained section of bamboo there, since I can really remember when the places were built that long ago, and they haven't spread anyplace. It's the same variety. Also, if people were wondering why there's also the corrugated fence material being woven in between the two rows, because while bamboo doesn't lose its leaves completely in the winter, it's a really severe one, they kind of shrivel and get, you know, wind beaten, et cetera, before they leaf back out. So this will offer additional protection. I believe we had a member of the public sign up tonight, Ariel Rebraca. Ariel, are you still there?
Hi, I am. Thank you so much for having me. And also just thank you to the board. It seems like some of the concerns that my brother and I, we own the property together, some of the things that we were thinking about, you guys, as well as Mr. Smith, have already covered. One thing, or I guess two items that I still am a little bit concerned about, that in the past and over time, like responsibility of snow removal has kind of changed over time. So the way that snow gets pushed around on the property and the people that live in kind of that loop, the extension behind Belvedere, there's some people that do their own snow plowing. There's people that plow Belvedere Mansion. And I'm just wondering, sometimes that little strip of land, and Mr. Smith, as you mentioned, the south border of the property, it kind of cuts right across my driveway. And more often than not, snow gets pushed into there from the Belvedere section of the road, and snow gets pushed into there from the residents that live in other portions of the loop. And I'm just concerned that at some point, if there is a fence there, which I'm for having a fence, I think it'll be nice to see greenery instead of the building. I'm just concerned where that snow will go, if there's a limiting factor, or I guess I don't plow personally, so I'm not as worried about that, but damage to the fence or just room. So I just don't want my driveway to be blocked in essentially. And in the event that, it sounds like all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted regarding the species of bamboo. And I know that there is bamboo on the property from the past, some of it which my own father planted, unfortunately, which has gone a little bit crazy. And I'm just wondering that if this does happen to spread, or let's say, jump the driveway, or for whatever reason, are there any stipulations for remediation of that? And who would be responsible for that? I feel like I spend half of my summer trying to control bamboo and other parts of our properties.
Victoria, I'm going to ask you to pop in there. Is there a way we can condition? I mean, we, it's a standard part of our language, that all elements of site plan must be maintained. So if, in other words, if it starts encroaching and wandering, we should be able to, I guess, do something about that in terms of enforcement. Victoria, can you help me here?
I'm here. I'm just thinking on it. I think the requirement would be that they maintain the barrier. And so if the barrier fails, they will have to come in and repair it as an ongoing site plan requirement.
But Victoria, correct me, but I don't think we can require them to go on someone else's property to remediate something if by chance the bamboo does cross the property line. So I think.
I mean, that would become a civil issue between the neighbors at that point, but we can require them to repair the barrier. I mean, is this type of bamboo one that spontaneously changes to?
No, no.
No, okay.
No, but it's not like a female frog that can become a male frog.
But bamboo is, you know, difficult.
Why don't we have them put a note on the plan? Because then there'll be something on, you know, the plan that I guess we could enforce, and we could say that in terms of something to do with the maintenance on it. And then if there was anything that had to be done on the neighbor's property, that it could only be done with prior permission from the property owner, maybe? So we had some kind of a note on a map?
Sure. We can come up with wording for a condition that they're required to maintain the root barrier as an ongoing condition of approval.
Another point of Ms. Rebraca's comments, in terms of snow plowing, we normally require applicants to show an area where snow would be stored when it's snowplowed. I think because this has been an ongoing site that we've been reviewing, but with very little changes, except for minor things like lighting, we've probably forgotten to do that. Warren, can you find an area to label for snow storage?
I can find out what practice has been with snow there. Sure.
And Ariel, I believe that you have, there's an easement that permits you and the other owners to cross the site. I assume the easement includes language that it can't be encumbered by trees and whatever, a gate, et cetera. So that is a civil action on your part, if you needed to enforce that. But as far as I can recall, when the applicant's attorney was here at one point, and I believe your mother, they went off, kind of out, this was when we were still physically meeting about three years ago, it was Mr. Alexander, Neil Alexander, they went out and discussed things. I think they both, I think Mr. Alexander looked through the easement and knows its details. And I think that the owner of the site is required to keep that open for you. So you would have a way to kind of enforce that, too, if snow were there or anything else, because they're not supposed to split snow on top of your property.
And well, the tricky part is, as Mr. Smith mentioned, our south property line, it literally cuts across the bottom of my driveway. So in the past, when, when our family was responsible for plowing Belvedere, and we did the whole circle, we knew that, oh, if we want access to our other properties, where we'd have to move the snow. But now it's kind of piecemeal that someone does the Belvedere section of it, and then one of the other neighbors does part of the loop. We do our own driveway. So it's just something to keep in mind.
Warren will investigate that. I know, to see what the practices are for snow plowing. Thank you, Warren. Anything else? Anything else, Ariel?
No, I think that's all. Thank you so much for bringing up these concerns and being very thoughtful about the choice that you're making and really intentional to make it as controlled as possible. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. It's something that the board really does take seriously. And also, and I'm going to sound like I'm sort of desperate, but it's so nice to see somebody new. We haven't had anybody comment publicly, except in writing, since we've been doing these Zooms.
Oh, no, I'll come every other week or so.
I'm serious. I was like, I got, I actually got excited. My heart started racing. I thought, okay, calm down, nerd. But it is nice to see someone new. And we always appreciate anybody from the public coming out to speak.
I'll tell everyone I know. Come stop by.
Thank you.
One come all.
Councilman Krupnick, were there any other people signed up for, to speak on this application?
Unfortunately not. Ariel, the exception that proves the rule.
We don't have our response back from county planning yet. I believe they're not due till Friday, so we should adjourn this meeting. It appears to me. Everyone agrees?
Yeah.
And I believe that we will, I think that Mr. Pickett may be moving to adjourn this to December 2.
I'll make the motion to adjourn this to December 2.
The hearing? You're adjourned the hearing?
Yes. Adjourn the hearing, yes, to December 2.
And I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Raise your hand, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Warren, we'll see you back in a little couple of weeks. If you need anything in the interim, feel free to reach out as always.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Hyde Park Town Center Park Plaza. We had some, lots of discussions last time. Ms. Leibl is here. Unfortunately, she left me a voicemail, and I didn't get it because I had a crazy, crazy day. But apparently, Mr. Berger's office, who prepares the plans, has been unable to provide the new ones, showing the new circulation. So we have to wait still, because we're waiting to refer that to county planning. Kelly, I'm sorry, I just babbled everything. Let me turn it over.
Okay, you took, you said everything. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, everyone. I was hoping tonight that we could review the changes that we had discussed last, actually two weeks ago, and present those to the board. I was pretty excited to kind of bring this to a closure. But unfortunately, there were some unforeseen circumstances, and we were not able to get those plans into the office. I apologize immensely. I think at this point, it may be best, because I don't have the materials in front of you, to seek to adjourn the public hearing to the next planning board meeting.
Like, we haven't opened it, I suppose, first. I should, I get a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that. And Dexter?
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hands, signify by saying aye.
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 Nays or abstentions? Okay. Now, Kelly, when would you like for us to adjourn this, too?
Is, is the board, I know, I think one of the meetings is the 16th, but I wasn't sure if there was a meeting before the 16th.
There is.
Okay. If it's possible, if we could, you know, I apologize. This is just something that isn't, wasn't expected, and we're hoping to have everything. The comment letter is finished. We just needed the plans, so I apologize.
Sorry.
And it happens, you know, we all, this is 2020.
It's not just that. It's also, if you gave us the comment letter without the plans, it really wouldn't make a lot of sense.
No, no. And everything, I think at this point, everyone's really trying to do their best. And so we'll just ask if we could adjourn it for two weeks. I think that would be ideal.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Anne. Is there a second?
Second, Stephanie Wasser. Is that to December 2?
Yes. Thank you.
All in favor, please raise your hand, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Before you leave, Kelly, you know we have another resolution involving this project?
Yes, I do.
It turned out, we made an error in not realizing that the new zoning had passed. And so we have to acknowledge that. It doesn't change anything. There's no condition, nothing. We're just rescinding the other, we're basically inserting language, pointing out that because you are not proposing to expand the building by up to 50%, I believe, you're exempt from the new, the building standards, so to speak, for. It's just a correction. That's all.
But the next set of plans that you submit should have the correct zoning district on it now, and the correct dimensions. And actually, I think scale goes away. So.
It does go away. Look.
Oh, sorry, Tad.
No, scale went away for this, for this district.
I'm going to conceal my excitement.
Scale went away, Kelly. I'm telling you, this is a good thing.
And how do we do the 50% expansion?
We don't have that ability in this district anymore. There is no scale, so they don't have to, they don't have to seek that to expand. Kelly, I can see, I can see a halo and some devil horns at the same time coming out.
Wow, I can't, I'm like, just so overwhelmed with excitement. I'm sorry.
Well, don't be too excited until you look at it.
Okay. All right. Okay, I will stay on if you'd like me to. I'm just at work, so I can just stay on and mute myself until the other.
It's up to you. It shouldn't be that long before up to it, but it's just up to you.
Okay, very well. Thank you for everything. I appreciate it.
And I forgot to say this to Ariel. I apologize, and to Warren. But happy Thanksgiving in advance.
Thank you. You, too.
Next item on the agenda, we're workshopping Hudson Valley Hospice House. As everyone knows, the applicants are before the zoning board of appeals for a variance, a request for to exceeding a scale limit of 6,000 square feet. a request for to exceeding a scale limit of 6,000 square feet. Before they can, the ZBA can act, we must do a secret determination. We had an offline meeting this week that I have to say I thought was really successful. And I got to, I have to really compliment Michelle and your office, your team. That was a quick turnaround. We got lots of information quickly today. So these involved in our last discussion, the issue was primarily about stormwater. And we'll call it the amount of cubic cubic yards of rock that might be removed, reused, crushed, etc. Both those things were discussed today. Michelle, at the last moment, sent in also a sheet that shows the limits of disturbance as requested by Ms. Axelton, our consultant. This came in at 4:07, Liz, if you didn't see that one, it came.
No, I did see it.
Right. It looks like it had ribbon candy to show in some places where the tree line would be preserved at this point. So that's just a quick, quick recitation of the issues. Michelle, let me turn it over to you and Jamie and Mr. Kaminsky.
Um, Michelle, do can I start?
You're muted.
Michelle, you're muted. I'm muted.
Michelle was muted.
Michelle was muted.
I'm here. I'm
Jamie, you're muted now.
Computer. Okay. I'm
I'm Yes, can hear both of you.
Okay, I guess I muted myself seconds ago. All right, so as Michael Dupree mentioned, we had a meeting in the beginning of the week to talk about some issues that the town engineer had. And I think it went successful and we, I'm going to let Michelle go into detail as far as what we discuss and what we agree to, but everything seemed to be moving forward with that issue as far as rock out cropping of rock and as the drainage and that kind of stuff. So Michelle could talk about that after I'm done. Attached to, I believe Neil has a PowerPoint. And the PowerPoint is basically 10 sheets. And just to go over each of the sheets is, you know, what we submitted the last deadline that we had. And the first two sheets are new images. I believe you haven't seen this. They're updated images of the exterior building. The third page is an updated title sheet. The fourth is a portion of the title sheet that's been enlarged, so people viewing on the screen could somehow see the summary chart. So it's the same thing from the, you know, the title sheet. The fifth sheet is the existing conditions, which is, you know, been updated. In the past meetings that we had, we had several comments from the residents and other entities such as fire departments and so forth. So we try to update our sheets accordingly, and we could talk about those items in detail later. The sixth sheet is a site plan proposed. More dimensions are indicated, updating of the sidewalk at the street level. We included a fence along the north side property adjacent to the residential area. And and among other things, again, we could talk about that in detail. The last meeting, we talked about several items that are also included on this proposed site plan. Sheet number seven is a grading utility, which is indicated as SPO3 that was requested. So we added that. Sheet eight is a landscape plan, which has also been updated and included with the package. Sheet nine is the erosion control plan, which is just a journal and information that was also required. And, you know, we added to our set. And the last sheet is the lighting plan. So with that, I'm going to lean over to Michelle so she could take over on as far as the detail, the engineering for the site.
Okay, that what I sent out, and I realized it was late this afternoon on the stormwater, there had been some questions as to how we would deal with it going offsite. The DEC does allow you to drain offsite. It's just you have to mitigate it, control it. And we have a large bow retention in the area. Where you're going to, that will provide treatment as well as control, quantity control. And then to control the rate at which it leaves, the velocity, there'll be a level spreader along the property line that will basically be a channel with a stone berm and the water will spill up in there and then filter through the stone berm to keep it from eroding the offsite property. As far as the rock on the discussion, I did an estimate for rock. Once it's closer, when they're ready to actually do building foundation designs, that's when you do the borings. So I gave a fairly big number for rock, saying if that whole knoll or that whole finger that's on that side where the basement's going is rock, that's what would be. That would be a huge amount. We are going to need rock on site for the road and other items. So the use of the rock, taking it off the side or bringing it in will, they'll balance out. I believe those were the two major things that came up from the meeting.
Ms. Serbus, it's Victoria speaking. Does the water go off the property now?
Yes.
Yes.
Actually, it's quite a bit. It comes all the way from Dollar General. It goes all the way around and goes off the property. There's a
Because I think once you start, you know, putting water in pipes and sending it off to other properties, we have an issue. So
It's only an issue for control for rate to erosion controllers. You just have to control the pre-post runoff rates.
Does that mean that if it's running off now a sheet flow and it becomes more concentrated, as long as pre-imposed production rates or volume is the same, that it's that's okay for the DEC?
It's two different things. One is the DEC saying the quantity. If you've got 10 CFS going off now, you can't have more than 10 CFS. And that's that's the only DEC regulation. They don't actually care, make a difference, distinction between sheet flow and concentrated pipe flow.
I would actually mark concern about trespass, like property.
Well, there's they don't. There's not trespass because because water goes where water goes. You just have to control the rate. And that's all the DEC cares about. Now, good engineering says you don't want to take a area that was spread out and fairly wide and then suddenly send a pipe that causes erosion. And that's why there'd be a level spreader that would spread it back out so that the velocity, which is not the same as this, not the cubic feet per second, but the feet per second would be controlled to a below in erodible rate.
So I'd like you guys or us to look into that a little more because I've always been under the impression that sheet flow is, you know, water is water. But once you start channeling it to a specific spot, then, you know, there's there could be a property rights issue. So
This is where the water all goes.
Okay.
It already goes right there. And it's it goes in. If you look at the grading plan, I think Neil, that should be sheets. That should be, keep going. One more. Let's see. Fortunately, my screen is not very clear. Yeah, that one.
That's it.
That's it. If you look in the upper right corner, right now, that's where all the water is going. And that's that actually collects water all the way from the future Dollar General. And all that water right now goes all the way to that north through this site to that northeast corner. So we're not changing where the water comes from or goes to.
Victoria, I'll just I'll jump in here quick. Andy Lern and I looked at this because I wanted to get his opinion. He's he's you know, looked at a lot of drainage projects and Andy actually had this case in another town and so one of the things that that we looked at and I had emailed Joe and Michelle yesterday, in fact, and if we can, if we can limit, you know, the discharge to a certain, Michelle had mentioned a certain velocity, that's not going to create any kind of erosion. And the fact that that they are going to use a very wide level spreader on the top, you know, the goal is to try to, for the most part, like mimic the current runoff, which, you know, is sheet flow and we're and that's what we're trying to mimic. So, you know, we'll have to go work with him on that because I understand what you're saying. That was my my concern, like initially, that we weren't going to concentrate anything. We certainly can't. You know, right now, as 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 Michelle said, it's a wide sheet flow, and we couldn't just all of a sudden poke a pipe out there and then have a concentrated, you know, discharge because we just, you know, can't do that. So and I have a couple other thoughts that I'll work with Michelle and Joe on, because I think if we could try and possibly take some of the roof leaders or, you know, all of, you know, the roof leaders. And instead of tying them right, like directly into the drainage system and send all that water into the back, maybe, maybe we could try to do some infiltration with an overflow, you know, in case the infiltration got like full, but at least we would try to infiltrate as much as we could and then have an overflow to the pond. I didn't get a chance to look at what Michelle had submitted, but I I'll take a look at it at some point, you know, tomorrow, I hope. So.
Again, as a reminder, we're trying to get move forward on this for seeker. Obviously, there's plenty of time for a more granular analysis
That's correct.
of all these issues.
Right.
But it's important to tie this up for seeker and so that it's soon as we can, that's that's ideal. Anything else from you, Pete?
Well, I guess, you know, I just want to make sure that, you know, the board is aware that there is the possibility that they they will probably, depending on the quantity of rock, which I think they would have enough to try to recycle and reuse on the site, that they are contemplating bringing in a crusher. So, you know, that's something that you know, again, I didn't get a chance to look at anything, you know, today, but I would assume that, you know, the narrative or whatever that was sent did did mention something about the possibility of like a rock crusher. And then we'd have to look at the hours would have to like be limited. And it's just, it's just something that we need to make sure that everybody's aware of as we make our seeker determination on the project. So.
And Pete, I didn't, I don't have the updated. I only have the notes that I had before for blasting. I still the crusher would still fall under the SWIP dust control and that type of thing.
Yeah, well.
You don't have, I don't have any updated crusher notes yet.
Well, I don't. I mean, I don't. Again, I think, did you say that some of the stuff that you submitted today did have some information on the rock in it?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Then I misunderstood.
That's what I thought, too. I thought I was missing something.
No, you you aren't. I didn't.
Okay.
Other other than the notes that I were on the plans previously submitted, which covered all of the typical blasting type items.
Well, we're
Crushing crushing creates dust, SWIP is dust.
We'll work together on that, Michelle, but I think, and I'll talk to Liz a little bit more, but I think we're going to need a little bit of a narrative that can go along with the EAF that would just, you know, discuss, you know, the rock excavation hours, you know, blasting, like maybe like ripping, you know, like or hammering limited like hours. And then, you know, the possibility of a rock crusher. I just think, you know, as long as we have it like a narrative and it's part of the seeker review, then we can deal with the nuts and bolts as we get into the site plan review.
Okay, I have I have that already on the title sheet and the hours I just say per town code, which I'll be updating the title sheet for specific hours.
Okay.
And I apologize. I shouldn't. I didn't mean that was new information about rock. It was some of it was a reiteration of what was there before for how much they'd be removing, etc. So Ms. Moss, comments?
No, no comments.
Ms. Axelton, comments?
Well, I I did submit a new updated review memorandum today. I apologize for getting it out late. But what I discussed with Pete, the intention there was to kind of show an update based on the offline consultation that we had that I found to be very helpful. And so the focus of the memo was to try to indicate whether we could have preliminary information on certain issues to get through seeker and that more specific stuff would be provided later. I think that was the hurdle to get through so that the applicant can move forward on with any decision from the ZBA. One of the things that I recommended that we didn't discuss at the offline consultation, and Pete and I kind of put our heads together on this, was there's a driveway that goes around the back of the building. And in the last review, I'd questioned it and suggested turnarounds, but it was explained very clearly that that wasn't really going to work and the turnarounds would result in trucks making beeping noises, etc., just not appropriate for this site. So I made a comment to make that a one way around the building because I believe it's intended for trucks coming in and needing access back there and needing to be able to get around the building without having to turn around. And Pete and I agreed that 16 foot wide would be enough to go one way with, you know, plenty of leeway. And that would reduce what is now a 22 foot wide driveway behind the building down to 16. So, you know, it saves six feet of width of pavement for considerable length and could reduce some impervious, which I think would be good.
You suggested doing it clockwise, I think, when I read the memo.
Counterclockwise.
Counterclockwise, I was wrong.
And the reason was because when trucks come in and they're headed toward the building, they would be able to take a right turn and go around. That was my thinking. I mean, you know, maybe the project team will see it differently and want to take a left first and go around that way. They're going to know.
So Liz will definitely look at that. I think 16 would do.
No, actually, hi me, the fire department's not going to want 16 because we might
I was going to raise this issue.
We might
I was going to raise this issue.
We might have 16 feet of asphalt, but by the time you put out enough shoulder that can support the weight of a fire truck, you just have the same impervious area. So you have 16 feet of asphalt and you have another four or five feet of gravel on each side, you just hit the same impervious area.
Right. You're going to have a mix of different type of materials along curves and everything to allow for the curving or the turning radius.
Why don't we let the fire department, you know, weigh in on this and then we'll get like a definitive answer from them.
Okay, because NFP 13 requires this a set width. And that's usually what fire departments want because they have to be able to get their outrigger at any point.
Yeah, but why would they have to but why would they have to go like and set up on that access road? They're not going to go like set up like a rigor on, you know, outriggers on that access road that's very, very far away from the building.
I'll check with them because I I've had trouble before where we try to shrink down a road and they say, okay, you can have 16 feet of asphalt. But we want all this gravel on the side.
Right.
And you end up with the same impervious width.
I I think it's a good suggestion to go ahead and check with them. We have for, I guess, actually, it's just Ann and I now, but a zillion years ago, when we were young on the planning board, we had a driveway that was going for access to Mariopolis Luminosa that was, Tab will remember, I think it was maybe longer than a mile. And they had agreed to narrow it down, but then they required they have bump outs as well as gravel on the sides. So it wound up not really reducing the impervious.
That's correct.
Then we also got to remember that the turns are in the front portion near and closer to Violet Avenue is relatively flat, but as it goes behind the building, it goes down the hill. A significant, you know, pretty much almost a story. So to make it 16 feet is just going to make it a little bit harder for the large machines to to go through if necessary. So we just, just to point that out for the, at this point.
I would say that the turn making it counterclockwise, I apologize. And so one way to me seems like a safer, more beneficial way to approach them, but that's up to you guys to propose. And it's Liz's suggestion.
Well, currently it is a one way, except for the the island in front of the main entrance of the building.
Yeah, and actually, I was only talking about having it become one way after the parking. I might not have explained that very well. In other words, the parking that the southern little parking area there right there. In other words, I would assume that whole area, those driveways are all way in there. There's enough aisle width for two way. But once you get past the parking and it's just a truck going around, then there's no, no need for two way. I think. That was my thinking was that 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 loop road is really only for certain types of vehicles. That's not for all cars, I assume, to go around.
In most cases, they would probably go counterclockwise in all cases. In most cases, they would probably go counterclockwise in all cases, only because we didn't want people to, I mean, right now it's intended to be one way. So when you come in, you go to the right, turn around the building and then exit.
You mean for, for trucks or just for regular vehicles?
For both. We don't want confusion to, you know, we don't want the confusion of people going back out. So if you zoom in, you could see some, I believe it's on this drawing, you see some arrow, you know, directional arrows.
I didn't know that because I mean, just, you know, if I was, I guess I looked at it as like a rehab facility. I know it's not, I understand that, but where you might pull in, park, and then when you leave, turn around and, and go back out, it, it, it's not apparent that it's one way. And if it is all one way, all the way around, then I wasn't sure why. I think the aisle widths are 22 or 24. So I assumed they were two-way because they're so wide.
Yes, Liz, within the parking lot, it is two-way, within that front parking section.
Right, right.
Two-way. And the back is primarily for that. We also are going to have the oxygen truck coming in, which is an 18-wheeler. And those are tight curves.
Well, anyway, and then the other, I did a recap, basically, you know, still looking for the information and, you know, some narrative. I understand that you submitted some stuff today and I'm grateful that you were able to get some information out. I, you know, I don't know about the board, but, you know, the, just the calculation without some kind of, you know, explanation narrative. The planning board members are the decision makers. So we need that to be provided, you know, so that when they're making their decisions, they have a decent understanding of, of what they're looking at. On the sketch with area of work, Michelle, I had emailed you because I didn't know if the area of work was a different type of thing than limit of disturbance.
It, it can be, because it's, because we're only trying to get seeker right now, not full level design, because we need to get seeker to be able to get to the health department, the DOT and the zoning. I didn't look at each nuance as to whether work such as putting in the fence, which is maybe minimal disturbance versus, versus other little sightline things, versus worrying about, okay, the, the grading ends at a certain point, but what's going to be the damage to trees, even if you're not tree roots, even if you're not actually intending on impacting those trees, you have to consider that. So that's what that line is. And as far as the separation at this point between limit of work and limited disturbance, it's way too early.
I just checked my most recent plans. I do not see any directional indicating that's a one-way counterclockwise.
You are correct, Michael. It's not a one-way, because it's primarily just going to be trucks and the maintenance vehicles.
I, I guess, I thought what we were looking for was, I guess, we were having trouble figuring out, you know, with the line length. So I know you're still working on that, trying to discern between what is, you know, existing contours and what are the proposed contours. And oftentimes, a limited disturbance line, at least in my experience, I guess I would have pictured it having obviously to go around the basins that are right on Violet Avenue. And, you know, obviously there needs to be a margin between the end of the grading for, you know, equipment to be able to do that work. Um, and so when I looked at the map that we received today, I could, I think I could discern the grading, but maybe it's not all on there yet. And so I, I guess what I'd anticipated on most of the plans that we review is there's typically an edge of the grading and some margin for work to occur. And then there's a limited disturbance line and silk fence if it's needed, et cetera. And that's, the idea was then to be able to see, okay, well, somewhere outside that limited disturbance line, whether it's approximate or final, we would have an understanding to present to the planning board of vegetation that could be retained. And so when I saw the area of work map, it looked extensive and I thought, I must be missing some grading. So.
Well, what it is, is I, I had originally not been doing this, but as you asked at the Monday meeting for it, I put this together, I made it very big. Final grading has not been done. Final design has not been done, because we don't want to do that until we get through seeker, so we can get our zoning, to find out the zoning board is going to give us our scale variance. We don't get the scale variance, then all of this work is for nothing. And I'm not going to sit, I don't want, I do not want to have to put in the hours for final grading and final stormwater unless I know that the variance is going to be granted. Otherwise, it's just a waste of the hospice money.
Understood.
No, we understand that. We understand that, Michelle. And Liz, you know, why don't we, why don't we talk about it, you know, like ourselves, you know, tomorrow?
Yeah, I just want to emphasize that, again, it's helpful if you guys can digest whatever you're presenting on the stormwater and, and the area of work or limit of disturbance, so that the board has what it needs to understand if they're going to do a secret negative declaration, you know.
All right. Well, we'll talk about it tomorrow. All right.
Victoria, comments?
Not at this point.
Then let me start this way. Ms. Napoli, comments?
Um, I look forward to having certain things resolved at a future meeting. And if I remembered correctly, the just architectural design of the meeting, the rooms have big windows that I thought were facing out to the back. So the least, um, noise, the least disturbance of truck movements going behind, I would think would be a benefit for the people who are there. But that's to be determined in the future. And in terms of the landscaping notes that Liz had added in her latest comments, I think are important to that we have the standards, that we add a small pedestrian plaza and that would provide a waiting area for any employees and others who take public transportation. So I thought that those were good points I would like to make comments on. And aside from that, thank you as always for bringing your business to Hyde Park.
Hi, Chair Dexter?
I echo that. I don't have many comments. I did want to know if we could do a sidewalk?
Oh, yes.
I'm just, I'm really curious. I was on a project just north of there for the SPCA. And I just, I want to see if it's like a similar topography. They ran into a lot of rock issues.
Bensky, I don't think you've bought the parcel yet. Can we get permission from the owner to walk the site?
Uh, yeah, I can, I can talk to him. We've secured the property, but it's conditioned on the approval. So technically, technically, we don't own it.
Right. That's what I was going to say. We just need owner's permission usually before we walk. Victoria would be, would prefer that I said we get owner's permission before we walk the site.
I can get that.
And what we'll do is Cynthia and I will coordinate with planning board members. It's usual that, particularly now that it gets dark so early, it's likely that we would walk on a week, weekend. And you can be present or you don't have to be present, it's up to you. But we usually don't talk amongst ourselves as a group, because that would be an illegal meeting. So we break off into small groups, but we do this all the time. And it's actually helpful in many ways. We, there's an application coming forward, the next one called Cardinal Used Auto Parts. And by going onto the site, we were able to see what natural vegetative screening there was. So we are, we actually more or less, I think, are going to be telling them that they don't have to do all the screening that was required by the code. We can relax some of those standards because we eyeballed it. There's, there's really nothing that can hurt by us going on the site and seeing things, I can assure you. So we'll be that, we'll be in touch with your office by email.
Thank you very much.
Anything else, Ann?
No, that, I just wanted to walk the site.
Oliver?
I'm looking forward to hearing some more about the, the drainage and the, where the water's going and how, how you guys resolve that. Other than that, I don't have any further input at this time. Thank you.
Pfizer?
Um, I, I also, I do, I concur with my, my colleagues. I have no extra input, but I do look forward to the sidewalk. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Pickett, comments?
Uh, we've already had quite a bit of discussion on emergency vehicles. And that was one on my list with regards to the width of the roadways on the entry and exit. If you look at where the awning is, where you'd have an emergency vehicle go through next to the building, it looks like there's kind of maybe two pinch points there. That might be kind of tough. Then the other, I was looking at handicap accesses and curbing. I think these are all things for down the road a bit.
Thank you. And yes, as I said, as we go forward, we'll be going into more granular level, but they first need to get through the ZBA on this. Ms. Wasser, comments?
Um, no, I think my colleagues hit all the points. Thank you.
Believe it or not, Gabby Hayes here doesn't have any comments either. I like the latest iteration of the plans. I appreciate it. We will need to nail down whether this is going to be a one-way circulation pattern or not. I think Diane was right. It probably is more sensitive to minimize, we'll call any kind of disruption in the rear for the patients and their families while they're there. I also, I keep saying this, but I think it should be stated for the record many times, this, under our code, this is a residential use. This is considered a residential use because it's a residential care facility. So while, again, screening's not required, I do know that, that we've all been, we've all been able to see some comments offered by neighbors at the ZBA meetings. And that seems to be one of their concerns is, you know, proper screening, et cetera. And we've already brought up the issues about blasting on individual well effects, you know, et cetera. So I believe we're doing the kind of review we're supposed to do. And I think that we're, we've inched much, much closer, not inch, we've gone much closer to now being able to make a secret determination as soon as Pete's able to review the numbers that Michelle provided. And again, they're rough numbers. We're not going to see too level of detail because we still need to get further along to that. And also I want to make sure everyone is aware that if there's some new information that comes up, we can always reopen seeker based on new information. We're just making sure that we have enough to qualitatively forward so that we can make the determination itself. We're also going to set a public hearing tonight, because I'd like to start getting public input as soon as possible. Legally, we're allowed to conclude seeker before we hear from the public, but it seems prudent to go ahead and let that happen at this point. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I have one more thing I want to get clear on. My impression now of the map that Michelle has created has given us the most honest look at what's the most area of disturbance we're going to see. And in all likelihood, when things are more refined, it will be more refined and it'll probably be less. So if it's possible for the planning board to take seeker action with a little bit more information in a map like this, that as we move forward, you know, the design's only going to get more streamlined.
I think what Michelle was saying early on, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, Michelle, so correct me, but you gave us sort of a worst case scenario in terms of area of disturbance and a worst case scenario in terms of rock removal. You went really high on it. That way, by knowing what the worst case would be, we would be able to act on a secret determination. That, that's how I interpreted that.
Yes, that's correct. Because I, I look at seeker and that you're looking at is what's worst case. That's why it's usually done fairly early. And then what's the worst case? So that you can sit there and say, if this was done, would it still be an environmental impact? And then you can come back and define it. But it's, it's hard to do plans with, that involve so many other agencies at this level and this, without having a few things taken care of to do the detailed design. So I'm trying to throw out worst case so that you can make a decision.
That's what it's supposed to be. As, as we often tell people, like say for a restaurant or a store, imagine the worst case. And by that, I mean the best case, when you're most crowded, when you have everybody there and it's all filled up, because that's what we're looking at is the largest potential impact. So I believe we can get a motion instead of public hearing for December 2.
I'll make that motion. Chris Oliver?
Taking Diane Napoli.
I heard some discussion. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand, say aye.
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 Ayes or abstentions. The motion carries. So we'll see you in two weeks. In the meantime, Mr. Sotero, Ms. Axelson, and maybe Mr. Lern will confer on things and see if we can move forward to get this going, keep this going, I should say.
Looks like.
We'll work together. We'll work together with the applicants and, you know, because we want to get this done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, all of you, however you're celebrating.
Same to all of you. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a new application. It's the board's first time to hear about the application. It's Cardinal Used Auto Parts. I don't want to take Ms. Labruto's steel or thunder, but in this case, the applicants are not proposing much different. There's an existing auto parts dealership that's, or not dealership, a salvage yard that's there. The DEC permit and under our code, their permits, the special use permit, the site plant are not keyed to the land. They're actually tied to the owner. So they must come through this process again. Before I let Karen speak, also, we did have a sidewalk, because we wanted to make sure that we knew what we were looking at. I believe there were at least six of us, or five of us were there. And none of us discussed in a group any of the matters of the, at hand. We did discuss individually. What was interesting was is that there's a house to the rear that I thought would need to be screened. And actually, there's a big rock outcrop that blocks it entirely. There's a house way to the east, but again, a rock outcrop, unless you're standing on the very far corner of which you would see about three vehicles, that's it. So it was very enlightening. We did, I, rather, I did ask Karen to at some point consider asking for, or consider adding some evergreens along Cardinal Road, because there's some houses there and you can see some things from Cardinal Road. But I was surprised, once we walked the whole site, how little of it showed, let's put it that way. So Ms. Labruto, welcome, and let me turn it over to you now.
Thank you. Good evening, Karen Labruto. I'm a senior planner with the Chasing Companies and I'm joined here by Ramon Leep of Cardinal Used Auto Parts. And so he's here if you guys have additional questions. I do have a presentation that I can share if I'm allowed to share my screen. Is that all right?
Yes.
Okay. So let me find that. Here we go. Great. Are you able to see the presentation?
We are.
Okay, great. So here's a project summary. It's located on Cardinal Road. It's approximately 21.8 acres. It's in the Green Belt zoning district. And as Michael mentioned, it's improved with an existing licensed scrapyard. The proposed condition would be similar operation to the existing, but we would have compliance with the required 50-foot buffer. So we'd be moving car storage that's currently within those buffers or otherwise encroaching away from those property lines. No new construction is proposed and we'd be complying with the requirements of zoning section 108.25, allowing for proper fire access and mounting extinguishers. We are requesting approval for the scrapyard license and with that, a special permit and site plan approval from the planning board. The scrapyard's located on site since 1970. As Michael mentioned, there's substantial natural vegetation on the west and north sides with some off-site and also a lot, quite a bit on the east side with some rock outcrops. As I mentioned, there is car storage currently encroaching. There are some existing non-conformances such as the unoccupied dwelling right off Cardinal Road, which is in the front yard, and also the lot coverage. There's a New York State Class C stream and a small pond in the center of the site. And the site's not located within 500 feet of a church, hospital, public building, or place of assembly. So here's a picture of the site plan. And I'll, I'll try to zoom in a little bit, make it more helpful. So these black masses are the car storage. This is the area where we would be doing stacking, double stacking. It's about 10,000 square feet or so. Here's the unoccupied residence, which would remain unoccupied. Here's the main area where car dismantling would occur. And so you can kind of see that these have been arranged, more or less, you know, according to how they currently exist, and then according to topography, and then according to, you know, fire and access needs. So let's see. In terms of operations, here's a couple of pictures from inside the dismantling area. You can see it's pretty well organized. They're going to continue the existing operations. They won't be using a massive car, a massive crusher. They're Um, they won't be using a massive, um, car, a massive crusher. They're doing soft crushing with the loader, essentially crushing the vehicles for removal off-site. Three employees, uh, eight to five, Monday through Friday, I think eight to noon on Saturday. Um, they're not open in the middle of the night. They're taking cars from auctions, so they're not receiving in the middle of the night or after five. Um, it's two car carrier trailers daily and approximately five flatbed trucks daily as well. Um, the storage on the site is for 1,850 with the stacking. Um, in the proposed condition, we'd be pulling the car storage out of the 50-foot, um, required buffer. And, um, the New York, New York State regulates scrapyards fairly heavily. Um, so right here, I've just noted environmental conservation law. Article 27, they do annual reporting. They being the applicant would be required to annually report the number of cars coming in and out. Um, they'd have to talk about the waste stream. They'd have to talk about any hazardous materials or, um, materials of, you know, environmental impact. Um, and this is, you know, something that's been occurring on site, you know, since the 1970s. Again, it's, it was licensed. It will continue to be licensed in the future. Um, and so that's it for my presentation.
Let me start. Um, Mr. Sotero, any comments? Ms. Axelson?
No, I mean, we really haven't been like involved in this because it's really, I mean, there's really nothing from an engineering, uh, perspective. And uh, I don't think that Liz has looked at it either, but I'll let her, I'll let her speak.
No, we discussed it in an agenda meeting. There really wasn't any need.
Um, it's I didn't think so. I just wanted to make sure that that thing hadn't piqued your interest. So before I go on, Ms. Moss, comments?
Uh, yes. Um, I was looking through some paperwork today because I was dealing with MS4. Uh, and I'd like to talk to the, uh, to Pete Sotero about, um, salvage yards are considered hotspots for MS4, and there is a stream that runs through here. I'm thinking that it might be good for the town to document, uh, what measures are being taken, uh, so that we can, we can positively address that we looked at it. Um, so I would like to get with Pete and, and possibly Andy to look at that. Uh, and then the applicant to make sure how things are being addressed.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Polidoro, any comments at this point?
Uh, no, I mean, the, the one question was uh, whether you wanted to condition approval on the cars coming from auction, only because it shows that there's not the crushing activity, but that's, that's it.
I do want to say that it was, well, first, I'd like to say that the current owner is really a character. It was fun out there on the sidewalk talking to him. He's, he was very amusing. Um, then second, the, they explained the operations to us. And the reason why I believe Ms. LaBruto was talking about it was because our only experience with this, most of the board has been with Maltz. And when that changed ownership, that was a very different situation because those are almost all coming in from car accidents. So the hours of operation were pretty substantial. And if you recall, those of us who were on the board at the time, you know, we had a lot of, uh, homeowners who lived around it who were not always happy. In this instance, all the houses are really far away. Um, the current owner actually lives just to the, uh, west of the site. We couldn't see his house at all. As I said, there are only two houses sort of visible, and for the most part, they weren't. So with Maltz, you actually could see houses all around it because the neighborhood equipped up around that site. This is very different. So, and I appreciated seeing the, uh, the way the system works, um, how it works. We also got to see the soft crush, uh, for everything. So it's, I was much more assured by taking the sidewalk that this is not posing any environmental hazards or anything else. And I, I, I think it's actually a good business because there is a lot of recycling of these items. And then it's ultimately the, the, uh, the fluids are drained, stored, uh, sometimes recycled. Uh, then ultimately the metals, uh, when it's sold, it goes off to be recycled as scrap metal itself. So it's like a way to stop seeing junking, junked cars on the sides of people's houses and stuff. So to me, this is a, this appeared to be a good use. And I've lived here for 27 years and gone down by that place many a time and I've never heard a sound. I didn't even realize there were that many deliveries that were going in there because I just don't see it often enough. I've never seen customers going in and out of there. But apparently they are. Otherwise, Mr. Leate would not be trying to buy the business. So let me start with my colleagues. Ms. Wasser, comments?
Uh, yes, thanks. Um, I, I was actually wanted to add, the sidewalk was so helpful. I was fascinated how they were organized for fire breaks. You know, when you look at that drawing and you see the spaces in between each grouping, um, you know, all the steps taken to, you know, be careful. Uh, I do want to reiterate my, uh, desire to see some evergreens along Cardinal Road. Uh, just to break up that space, doesn't have to be along the entire expanse, but just to give a, a break to that wide open vision of all the, um, cars. Other than that, I didn't have any other comments.
Thank you. Mr. Pickett, comments?
I'll agree with you, Michael. I thought that it was a good tour. I think it's a good use of the property. In talking with the people, it's very highly DEC regulated annually, biannually or more. So, and they haven't had any issues. But I'll agree that I think evergreens along the road, uh, would be very helpful. That's it.
Thank you, Brent. And? Ms. Wisser, I should say. Well, these floating around, I don't know what, what makes these little Hollywood squares float around so much, but you're right, people keep migrating anyway.
So, yeah, it was, I thought it was a really impressive operation and we really appreciated the amount of time we took with us at the sidewalk. I do agree with, uh, Brent and Stephanie, though, the note about the evergreens would just really help it out. But other than that, it's a really cool business.
Ice chair?
Uh, I just, I would echo my colleagues and definitely thank the applicants because that was, uh, again, I've just gotten such a great feeling from, from what we're doing with our, uh, with these lots that I never knew what they did and, and I'm, I'm happy to walk them now. It's great.
Thank you, Ms. Denapoli. And I'm sorry you couldn't make it on the sidewalk, Diane.
I know. And listening to everyone's comments, maybe I should make a suggestion that they have an annual open house. It was 72 degrees that day, too.
That really helped.
And we, we arrived in jackets and had to, we were all stripperales shortly because it was just too hot to contain what we came in on. So any other comments, Diane?
No.
Chris?
Um, I would also, uh, agree to the evergreens along Cardinal Road. I think that would be a nice, a nice touch for the area. Um, other than that, I don't really see much change in the use and you know, like everyone said, they are highly, highly regulated by DEC. So you know, they're, they're going to keep their eyes on it every year. So thank you very much.
I did, uh, email Karen, uh, to inform the owners. So right now there are tires stored outside. Um, they're actually, their tires and vehicles stored within the 50-foot buffer that are going to be pulled back, but I believe they're going to continue to keep the store, keep the tires. If you're wondering why they store them, it's because some of the, a lot of the vehicles don't have wheels. And so they need to jack them up. They put them up. They put temporary wheels on them and then put the wheels right back over. Um, but Department of Health has asked us to, uh, to see projects where there might be such storage outside because of mosquito control. So what we're going to do tonight is type the action and then send it over to the Department of Behavioral and Community Health, as well as to the Hyde Park Fire Inspector. And I believe that that will get us going to the next steps. And I also believe that we can, I think that we should probably set a public hearing on for December 16th. That seems appropriate, everybody?
Yeah.
Karen, I'm sure you're ready to go. And so is Ramon and his other, his partner on this.
We are.
Okay.
I'll read the resolution. Resolution typing action and referring the application to the Duchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health and the Town Fire Inspector, Cardinal Road Auto Parts LLC, November 18th, 2020. Resolution 2020 dash 20. Whereas seven times now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby, one, classifies the project as a type two action under seeker. Two directs its secretary to refer a copy of the site plan set for the Duchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health and the Town of Hyde Park Fire Inspector for review and comment.
I'll second that. Chris Oliver.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, any further discussion? Everyone in favor, please raise your hand, say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. There were no nays or abstentions. And may I get a motion instead of public hearing for Cardinal, Cardinal Used Auto Parts for December 16th, 2020?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second, and Dexter.
Thank you, the other Ann. And all in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Karen, Ramon, we'll see you on December 16th. Um, Ramon, we're very happy that you're bringing the business here and taking it over and it doesn't just fall apart. Uh, thank you for your investing into, inside our community. In other words, we appreciate it and look forward to having a new business in town. And also both of you have a very happy Thanksgiving, however you're celebrating, just do it safely.
Thank you. Same to you. Thanks, everyone, for your time.
Happy Thanksgiving and Karen, nice to see you in front of the Hyde Park Board.
Thank you. Nice to see you again, Liz. Okay, bye-bye.
Bye, guys. The next item on the agenda is River Ridge at Hyde Park. So in this instance, this is a pretty easy resolution. So the, the, uh, applicants have been before us several times over the, over the years, decades, uh, with some minor modifications to the elevations. In this one, they're not changing the building footprint whatsoever, but they do want to, uh, in terms of marketing, be able to put a master bedroom on a bottom floor. Which seems logical to me because of course I have aging needs. So in doing so, it required some changes to the overall exterior elevation. The applicants, when we met, um, with, uh, Mr. McLaughlin, the applicants were interested in having this as an option, this facade. They may still stick with the current ones because it depends on how the marketing, how it works. So it's very simple. Ted wanted a record. So what we worked out a deal was, is that we would, uh, have the new sheet just as an elevation sheet. I would sign that sheet and then that would be put into the most recent set of the entire plant set because it seemed foolish to have an entirely new plant set that has landscaping, lighting, et cetera. None of that is changing. The other item was that, um, the road bond had expired. There you can see. The changes are basically, if you look at the very center of the bottom building, the bottom elevation, you can see that where there's, uh, there's the pediment and then there's two, um, two windows, each of them two, two over two or four windows, I should say. If you see what's below that, it almost looks like a balcony, but it's not. It's actually a new roof. It's a tin roof. Those are, it's totally different than the other sides, the other buildings. That's really about it. Um, like I said, on the interior, they'll be making, uh, a bedroom on the ground floor. In the meantime, we had a new, we needed a new road bond estimate. Um, Mr. Sotero and our highway superintendent, Howie Fisher, met and looked at not just the remaining road that needs to be built, but also the condition of the existing road prior to being donated to the town or offered to the town, uh, for ownership. What has happened is, is because this, I'm sure no one thought that this would take 15 years just to get to where they are, which is probably around 45 to 50% of the total development. You have heavy equipment going off and on all the time on the roads. And so it's created some damage. So Pete provided a new estimate and worked it up. He worked with the applicants. They've accepted it. I believe actually they've already given the bond uh, to Mr. Oplansky. The, the town board just has to accept it. It's already done. I believe Councilman Kropnik said yes on that one. So um, we have prepared tonight and, and Ms. Moss has actually recommended that we waive a public hearing uh, on this because this would only be of interest probably to the neighbors and that's, it's just a facade change to them. We know from talking to them, their concerns are really the road. So we'll make, making sure that's going to happen. Anybody have any questions or comments or Peter, me or Ted? That was easy. And we will first have a motion to waive the public hearing based on the recommendation from the design administrator.
So moved. Ann Wisser.
Second, and Dexter.
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. And now who's going to introduce this resolution?
Me. All right. Resolution granting site plan amendment approval for the, what is it, 15th time? River Ridge formerly known as Maple Ridge, November 18th, 2020, resolution number 57 dash 02R. Whereas, whereas, whereas now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby reaffirms its prior secret determination of non-significance last reaffirmed on September 4th, 2013, finding that the alternative elevation would not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby grants amended site plan approval for the project to include the alternative elevation as a permitted facade option for the remaining unbuilt units.
I second that.
Further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand, say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. And now we have another resolution to recommend to the town board that they accept the new bond amount.
Yes. Resolution recommending amendment of road construction letter of credit or other form of financial security. River Ridge at Hyde Park, FKA Maple Ridge, November 18th, 2020, resolution 57 dash 02S. Whereas, 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 whereas now therefore be it resolved that the planning board of the town Hyde Park hereby sets the amount of the required letter of credit or other form of financial surety at $760,000 in form and manner of execution acceptable to the town board and the town attorney.
I'll second that. Chris Oliver.
Discussion on favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Aye. The motion carries unanimously. And if I see Kelly, Kelly did have to pop up. The last, excuse me, the second to last item on the agenda, nope, third to last, is a resolution correcting the prior resolution that approved phase one of the Hyde Park Town Center Park Plaza. If everyone will recall, this is just the architectural elevation. We were a little bit unaware that the, had forgotten that the new law passed because we don't have it codified yet for us, but it has been adopted by Department of State. So this merely corrects to note that they don't have to, they're not, they don't have to apply for the building form standard. It's there. Any questions from anybody? I believe Chris is going to introduce this resolution.
Yep. Corrected resolution to grant site plan amendment approval, Hyde Park Town Center Park Plaza Phase One, November 18th, 2020, resolution number 2020 dash 15B. Whereas, 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 whereas. Whereas now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby revokes resolution number 2020 dash 2015A and grant site plan amendment approval to phase one of site plan set subject to the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. Brent Pickett.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda is a site plan waiver. This is, uh, recommended by Ms. Moss. It's to replace one window at 34th Floor Lane. But this is in the scenic area statewide significantly, which requires either site plan review or site plan waiver. We have that. Does anybody have any questions? It's a pretty minor application. Okey-dokey. I believe Ms. Wasser is going to introduce this resolution.
Yes, thank you. Uh, site plan waiver, town code section 108 dash 9.4C2. Uh, Patricia Holman. November 18th, 2020, resolution 2020 dash 25. It wasn't in bold, it was a trick. Okay. Whereas, 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 continuing the whereas's. Therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the proposed changes I described in the building permit received by the Building Department November 3rd, 2020, and per the request to the Planning Board dated November 9th, 2020. Second it, Diane.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda is to adopt the planning board meeting dates for next year. They're attached. If Mr., if Councilman Kropnik wants to show. Basically, we do this every year. It's just an administrative housework sort of thing, showing when the dates are that we must be submitting and when we're meeting.
And Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I think this is the first year that we haven't actually had to move or cancel a meeting for falling on a holiday.
It's true, Vice Chair. It is. I couldn't believe it. I looked and thought, well, that's pretty close, but July 4th, but July 4th is a Monday this year and July 6th is our meeting. And if people want to meet, miss, we can always change that one because people may want to take the week off, but we don't know it's going to happen under COVID right now. We all may be having staycation still, so.
I will point out that, um, September 15th is Yom Kippur.
Uh, okay.
So it's
So it's, and July 21st is my birthday.
Well, there you go. National holiday.
Should we consider canceling the September 15th meeting? I didn't look for religious holidays.
Well, I think I'm the only one on the board that would be missing that meeting. So you still have plenty of room for quorum. I just don't know.
Right, but you might have, I may have applicant. It's the applicant, too.
I don't know what you want to do with that.
And consultants.
And consultants, yes.
Would you guys like to just drop that meeting?
It might, it might be in good taste.
Then, can we?
Might want, Chairman, you might want to reschedule it to the, a different night rather than just drop it because we really don't know what kind of applications we're going to have pending at that time.
We could also wait and see.
Let's wait and see.
It's harder to change it. It's easier to drop than it is to add.
But we can all, it's also, we can, I, because once you schedule public hearings, in other words, it's you, if you change it later on, it becomes much more problematic. I'm in favor of going ahead and eliminating one meeting. That's okay. Even if we have a lot of applications, we could always, Ted, if we need to, we can always set a special meeting.
Those are the pain. Those are, those are extra work.
But we don't, but if we know they're coming up and we are going to miss one, we usually schedule around it and either do more right before, the week before, the meeting before, or, you know, we try to work with the applicant.
So as our conclusion.
Are you suggesting that we keep it and then work around it when it gets to September?
Drop it.
No. Dropping it.
Okay.
So. To accept this yet. So what we'll do is we will delete September 15th. And then otherwise, everything remains the same.
Okay.
And Ms. Weiser, will we be celebrating your birthday? Yes, we will.
Yeah, we won't cancel that meeting.
And guess what? We'll be celebrating on my birthday, too. So we'll.
Party.
That's true.
Party.
What's your birthday, Michael?
October 20th.
Well, maybe we'll be lucky to do it in person.
Gosh, I hope so. That'd be awfully fun. At any rate, so Megan, a motion to adopt the 202021 meeting dates as amended by deleting September 15th.
So moved.
Second, Stephanie Wasser.
Thank you. And by the way, Stephanie, thank you for getting that. I'm going to make a rule to start checking religious holidays, too. I don't know why I forget. I just think of them as public holidays. At any rate, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
I, I, motion carries unanimously. And all we need now is a motion to adjourn. But first, thanks, everybody, for, as always, sticking with us, doing all the work. And everyone have a happy Thanksgiving, as I've been saying. It doesn't seem a weird way to celebrate, but this will be the first year that I'm not, when I ordered my turkey, I went eight pounds, and the guy goes, huh? There's just three of them. It doesn't seem like.
They make eight-pound turkeys?
Eight to 10. I'll probably get a 10 one. It's like, think of it as a pullet, a little pullet, a young turkey.
Let's just get a big chicken.
We're just going to get carryout from Market Street.
See, it'd probably be better, to be honest with you, but it's, it's a tradition in my family that we do that. And where I'm from in the South, it's cornbread, jalapeno cornbread stuffing.
Yeah.
That's my favorite portion of, I like this stuff in the cavity of the bird because it's all juicy, et cetera. So anyway. Megan, a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Chris Oliver?
Second, Ann Dexter.
All in favor?
Aye.
See you in December. Thanks, everybody. Thank you, Councilman Kropnik.
Thank you, Neil.